Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley. Today is January 21st, 2020, and it's 5:30 PM. The sole presentation is recognition of the Falcon Football Team. The Mayor Gutierrez will speak and present certificates of recognition to the Falcons Football Team.
Alright, so how's everyone doing tonight? Good? Awesome. Good, well, I'm really excited to be here to recognize many of the youth that are part of the City of Moreno Valley. So, you know, as you come here, you know, there's gonna be, you're gonna be on Channel 3, alright? So just keep that in mind, and I'm sure you're gonna be really excited. And again, to really celebrate what you guys have been able to accomplish. You know, you're basically leaders, you know, and what you were able to do, and win this national championship. So that's just so amazing. So, I'm gonna ask if I could have, actually, first of all, I'm gonna say a few words and then I'll have you guys come up individually. I'm gonna ask Councilmember Cabrera if you could please come as well, and then Pat to kinda help as well with the certificates. The Moreno Valley Falcons Youth Football Organization gives the youth of Moreno Valley the chance to learn about the fundamentals of football in a highly competitive and encouraging environment. Just to show how much the Moreno Valley Falcons stand out from the rest, six of the Moreno Valley-based teams made it to the organizational Super Bowl. As if we didn't have enough to be proud of, our very own Falcons 10, you guys, and our under-team won the American Youth Football National Championship. The dedication of these young athletes to put in the long hours of practice and to work together as a team truly shows how great the people of Moreno Valley are. Tonight, we do more than just honor your great achievement of being national champions. We honor your drive to succeed, your ability to work together as a team to accomplish your goals, and your humility to see how you can improve and to take the steps to do so. These are traits that will serve you well as you continue to grow. And I just wanna say that before you actually took your trip, I saw many of you guys trying to do fundraising, some of you even by Stater Brothers, Starbucks, I mean, you guys worked hard with your parents to get to where you're at, so that's amazing. And so, as the Mayor of Moreno Valley, it is my pleasure to recognize the following student athletes for their great achievement, as well as their strength of character. So I'm gonna call your name, and if you can come on up, and then we'll have you staged right here until we have everyone, and then we'll also have your coaches as well, okay? And we also have a certificate of recognition. So the first one that we have is Maziah Riley. Can you please come in? Alright. We have Jayden Major. We have Darian Mahoney. Congratulations. We have Elijah Smith. Alright. We have Desir Ross. Congratulations. And as, I don't know if all of you guys know, but they have this beautiful ring for the Super Bowl, or the bowl ring. Is that awesome? Wow, nice, awesome, great. Okay, we also have Jacob Zubia. Jacob Zubia. Sorry about that. Congratulations. We have Joshua Akoff. Alright, congratulations, Josh. We also have Jaydon O'Keefe. Dwight Pleger. Skylar Pete. Congratulations, Skylar. De CJ Parker. Henrik Susmarano. Congratulations. Isaiah Gilliam. Kai Duval. We have Kingston Hunter. We have Rudy Flores. We have Troy Montalongo. Kingston Morgan. Nathaniel Medek. Congratulations. And then we have Jacob McGraw. Congratulations, Jacob. Alright. We also would like to recognize the team management as well, and the coaches, for their guidance and support that they provide to the team. So if we could have Team Manager Janelle Gilliam? Congratulations. We have Assistant Coach Steven Brown. Steven Brown. We also have Assistant Coach Lejay Godbolt. Assistant Coach Andrew Zubia. We also have Terrence Hunter. Assistant Coach Leonard Price. And last but not least, Head Coach Sean Carr. Congratulations. Again, let's give all of these hard-working folks a big round of applause. Awesome. Congratulations. At this time, I'd like to ask either the head coach, or someone that represents, if you would like to say a few words? Or anyone you wanna designate? Or it could be a designee. That's your designee? Okay. There you go.
First, I wanna say thank you to all the parents. Thank you to the staff of the Moreno Valley Falcons, our President, our A.D., all the whole board. I wanna thank, like I said, our parents, our community, everybody that supported us going to Florida, and importantly, I wanna say thank you to our boys. They put in a whole lot of work, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears. All the credit goes to them. I wanna say thank you to our staff, all of our coaches. This was a really big journey. Our boys, you know, they put everything on the line, and I just wanna say thank you to those guys, and thank you to the City of Moreno Valley for recognizing us. This journey to Florida, it was a great experience for our kids, and something that these guys are gonna remember for forever, so thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do. Thank you for everything you do. Thank you for everything you do. Thank you. Thank you, that's great. Congratulations. 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 Can you see that ring? Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. You're welcome. Congratulations. 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 You're welcome. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Yeah? Yeah. Yes.
Let's give the Falcon Football Team another round of applause. And I just wanna remind parents and coaches and everyone out there that these pictures will be posted on our Facebook page, so please look for them.
Yeah, if you go to City of Moreno Valley Facebook, and then we'll have them there, okay? Within about 24 hours? Let's give them another round of applause.
Okay, and thank you, Mayor Gutierrez. That concludes our special presentations. The regular City Council meeting will reconvene at 6:00 PM.
Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, Moreno Valley Public Financing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order, regular City Council meeting on January 21st, 2020, at 6:01 PM. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Rafael Burgueras, and then please remain standing for the invocation, which will be given by Reverend Pastor Stanton R. Herpik from World Christian Outreach.
Everybody stand, face the flag, put your hand over your heart, and repeat, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all."
Let us pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we take this time out of our busy schedules to just say that we love you. We thank you and praise you for what you've done for us. You first loved us, for God so loved the world, that He gave His only-begotten Son. And Lord Jesus, you came down from heaven to give your life, to reach out with your great heart of compassion, and you did that to heal us and make us whole. And you said, "Call unto me, and I will answer thee, and show thee great and mighty things which thou knowest not." And so now, we call unto thee. We thank you, Lord, for the city of Moreno Valley. We pray for our mayor. We pray for our City Council members. We pray for the police and the fire departments, and every department in City Hall. We pray for every worker, every employee. Oh God, my glory, just bless us and keep us in thy loving care. We pray for wisdom. We pray for right action and truth in the inner man. We pray for peace and prosperity and protection, and most of all, we pray for each citizen of this wonderful city. Now, Lord, before you departed, you said, "Seek ye first the kingdom of God and His righteousness, and all these things shall be added unto you." In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor, Reverend Stanton, for that invocation. It's always a pleasure to see you and to welcome you to our meeting all the time, so thank you so much. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Thornton.
Present.
Councilmember Marquez.
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Baca.
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez.
Here. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Jacquez Nares, City Clerk.
Catherine Vigil, Deputy City Clerk.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Kozanowicz, City Attorney.
Mike Lee, Interim City Manager.
Alan Brock, Assistant City Manager.
Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Hadi Neves, Acting Community Development Director.
Lieutenant Brian Holmes, Vice County Sheriff, Moreno Valley Station.
Abdul Alamat, Fire Chief.
Kathleen Sanchez, Director of Human Resources.
Patty Solano, Parks and Community Services Director.
Thank you. Alright. Before we hear public comments, I just wanna remind everyone to keep their comments respectful towards each other, and public comments on non-agenda items will be limited to three minutes. Please submit a blue speaker slip, and make note that you're speaking on non-agenda items. And then you're gonna submit that to the bailiff, or to any of the explorers as well. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, council and staff will not respond during public comments, and council comments or questions to staff will be addressed during the council closing comments. Madam Clerk, how many requests do we have tonight?
We have two.
Okay.
Earl Stevens and Luis Palomares.
Okay, go ahead and, let's have those two. Okay. Are they coming? Or who's the, who was the first one, Pat?
Earl Stevens.
Oh, right there by the podium. Yeah.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
My name is Earl Stevens. I'm representing a company, The Hole-in-Wall, in Moreno Valley, T-H-I-W. I'm one of the board members. I just wanna talk about our program in short view here. We provide services for people who are homeless, bus passes, clothes, food. We have a staff of certified counselors. I am one of them. I do intakes, I do assessments, I do group counseling, I also provide other services. I've been with this company approximately since 2012. I'm also a retired naval officer, and I'm also one of the products of Alcoholics Anonymous. This program has been going on for the last, since 2012. I don't have all the numbers here. Our CEO is on his way from Palm Desert at this time, and I guess he would have more to say. I was called on a moment's notice. I'd like to find out who's Ms. Baca, but I'll be talking with you probably, hopefully this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Earl. Appreciate it. Okay, we have Luis Palomares.
Luis Palomares, community activist. You know, we started the year off right. Wow, we got recognized again, Mayor. I'm so glad about that. We got another recognition.
One second, Luis, if you could.
Oh, it's on the wrong time here?
There you go.
Okay, go ahead. Thanks.
Okay, Luis Palomares, community activist. Wow, we ended the year great, amazing, all the things we got done through the last year, 2019, and, you know, we're gonna have another brilliant year this year with, we're already starting off with getting recognized, and got another, I believe, another award, right, Mayor? Of some, somewhat, what kind? I didn't really pay too much attention. And also, you know, we got all the new things that are coming. All the new stuff, like the new stadium we're gonna do here. I haven't been here a couple of weeks, I had been ill. And so, I'm really glad that, you know, and today, the students got recognized here, the football, that was great. We do so much stuff here for the community, for the kids in the community, 'cause look who we got on the board, on the council. We got our mayor that's very involved, a teacher, Second District right here with, oh my God, I'm not here today, I'm sorry. My council member, Pro Tem, Mrs. Baca, and then this, you know, this young one right here, Cabrera. I mean, he's all over the place with the students, and all over the map, and I am so glad. You know, I'm sorry, Carla, I'm just, I'm out today. And another thing I wanted to say is, you know, we're gonna have another great year, and I'm happy about all that. So it's just, I'm just making it short and sweet, so thank you very much, council members.
Thank you so much, Luis. Next one we have is Bob Palomares, and then Jason Latimer.
Good evening, Council. Mayor.
Good evening.
And we had a good year last, like Luis was saying, she probably said everything I wanted to say, so I'm gonna make it short, but you've done an incredible job, Mayor.
Thank you.
You know, I read the press enterprise every day. Every day. And I think it was maybe November and December, I seen a lot of articles where they were talking about the city of Moreno Valley. One article was yours, you know, and you were, it was about the programs that you have put into action here, you know, higher mobile, and they were talking about the finances, and they were telling other cities, "Look at Moreno Valley. Can see what they've done," you know? I mean, so, there's a lot that has been done, and I know it's all the other council members along with you and staff, you know? Mike Lee, you know, he's done a tremendous job, and Ms. Thornton and Cabrera, you know, this council and this city has been blessed with them here. And we're headed, we're on the right track. We're doing some wonderful things, and I know we'll continue, and let's just keep, keep doing it. And I hope everybody had a good Dr. King holiday yesterday. He was a wonderful man. You know, I used to think, man, look at this man, he fights for his people, but as I got older and I understood more, he was doing it for everybody. You know, not just his people, you know, the African-American, he was doing, 'cause I found myself where, I said, man, look, he was speaking for me. So, we were blessed with him, and that's great, so, thank you.
Thank you so much, Bob. Okay, next speaker, Jason.
I'm Jason. I'm a social work intern at CBU. I, this was a last-minute meeting. My D&amp;D group got canceled, but I, you have no idea how hard it is to get a bunch of adults in the room to plan an event. Maybe you do. How are we on the Movel Earns Program? Like, that made a significant difference in our lives. Like, in my wife's life, it was the difference between her transferring and finishing her bachelor's, which she finishes next year, and not. Like, it was substantial. Without it, she wouldn't have gotten a bachelor's. So how are we doing on it? I know that in the news, MVUSD just got a $150,000 STEM grant. Does that, is that separate, or just how's that program going?
Yeah, so it's actually, yes, it's a separate one. Yeah.
Bummer. But how's it going? Is it, is there any, is it dead in the water? Is it gone?
No, we're actually continuing it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
So we've actually allocated for two more years.
Awesome. It really does make a difference. Thank you. Like, I was affected, my wife was affected. It's a big deal. The education gap is, it's tough to surmount out here. It's no joke, but I'm a citizen of Moreno Valley that was affected by a program in a good way. Thank you. And then on a completely unrelated note, thanks for fixing that patch of Alessandro by the hospital. It was bad. Thanks. Roads are a big deal, it's all of the Facebook posts when people, but thanks, thanks for fixing that patch. Thank you.
No problem. Thanks, Jason. Appreciate it. Thanks for the kind words and the support also. Thank you. Alright, so we're gonna close public comments on non-agenda items. We are now going to move to our Joint Consent Calendar, Sections A through E on the agenda. All items listed on the consent calendar, Sections A, B, C, D, and E are considered to be routine and non-controversial, and may be enacted by one motion. The motion to adopt the consent calendars is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency, and shall be so recorded by the City Clerk. Alright, if there's any request items, please press your request. Okay, let me just, okay. Councilmember Marquez, did you wanna make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Okay. Alright, so there's a motion to approve the consent calendar. We need a second. A second by Councilmember Thornton. Okay, go ahead and please vote. Oh, oops. Any public comments?
There's no comment.
Alright, it's approved unanimously. We'll move straight to, I believe it was a public hearing, item F, actually.
Mayor, we're getting the ballot from upstairs.
You're getting the ballot? Okay. So we'll just do G1, then. We'll do G, is it far away? Or?
It's just in my office.
Oh, it's in, oh, okay. Well, that's okay. Well, we'll just do, I was just wondering, like, if it's in the river, or somewhere, like, somebody's traveling to take it or something. Okay. Alright, G1. We'll do G1. City Council Reorganization Selection of Mayor Pro Tem, Report a City Clerk. Go ahead, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk?
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members, this is your annual organization of choosing your mayor pro tem for the upcoming year, and that concludes the staff report. I'm ready to take nominations.
Gosh, okay, that's fast. Okay, cool. Alright. Any public comments on this item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have three speakers. Tom Jarrell, Rafael Burguera, and Luis Palomares.
Okay, we'll do two minutes each. Okay, go ahead. And if the other two speakers, if they could line up, please, and also be ready, that'd be great. Thanks so much.
Well, Happy New Year. Tom Jarrell, speaking on behalf of myself, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council-
Uh, Tom Jarrell, speaking on behalf of myself, the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, members of staff and the public, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Yeah, I can cover it in two minutes, uh, you know, there's two ways of looking at this, uh, the old axiom, uh, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. But also are the people who are doing the job, doing a good job, so I'm perfectly content with the way things are going. Uh, you know, one of the things that, uh, look how quiet these meetings have been and productive, and you know, we're still grinding out the sausage. Somebody recently asked me how the city was doing, I said, hey, they got a strong bottom line, a lot of good things happening in the city and so, um, and, and I think they meant it in a way like, like what's going on, it's been, you know, so quiet out there lately, so. And, but that's a good thing, and it's good to see us making good progress, I affirm some of the earlier speakers that passed along some kudos and observations, so I and it was really great to see those young people, uh, I had wonders, I was walking up, I'm looking at some, uh, uh, Super Bowl players, you know, fifteen years from now, but great bunch of young people, so thank you.
We have, uh, next speaker Rafael Burguera, followed by, uh, Luis Palomares.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, residents. Picking the pro ten for the next, for the, for, for twenty twenty is very important to the city of Moreno Valley. 'Cause that's person steps up when the mayor is not here and he's doing other business in other places. That person that steps up this year looks after the city while the mayor's not here. And I ain't know one person who has been doing that in twenty nineteen, and that's been Victoria Baca. Victoria Baca has been the woman and a leader in the city of Moreno Valley. She conducts the meeting in a business-like manner, because this is a business in the city of Moreno Valley when we come here in the chamber. And I know there are other council members that can also step up, 'cause they've been here too, and fighting for the city and their districts. But I see Victoria for twenty nineteen doing her job, her duty to her district and to the rest of the districts and to the whole city of Moreno Valley. If it was my choice and I had a ballot, I would pick Victoria Baca, and I hope she has it for one more year 'cause she's done her duty for the city of Moreno Valley.
Thank you, Rafael, Luis Palomares.
Well, Rafael said it all, so did, uh, Tom, so, I agree, you know, it's not broken, don't fix it, it's been going real good. Everything's like clockwork, I'm sure there's things that go on, but behind the scenes, but for the most, for the most, most part, it's all going good. So I think just leave well enough alone and let's see what comes out of this. So, um, you know, look at all the things that have come to the city, all the things that's happened, 'cause you're all, like, you've got the, the mayor, the mayor pro tem, and everybody falls in and gets along and makes things happen here. We got good leadership here, so I think it's good. And today I wanted to say, I should've said it earlier, on another note, I would like to ask if they could, uh, please close the meeting in memory of Jeff Clayton, he was an activist here in the community, and he did a lot in the community, he worked a lot with the students in the school with the football. And he had come out several times to the council meeting, also and spoke, uh, excellent speaker, and I wish we can do that tonight, thank you so much.
Thank you, uh, Louise, and we'll go ahead and do that, actually, 'cause, um, he's a great man. Um, he led a lot of, uh, youth groups, football coach, went to USC, great person and, um, very, very nice man. It's unfortunate, um, okay, I'm gonna close.
We have one more, Bob Palomares.
All right.
Again, they said everything I wanted to say. Yeah, but, uh, I don't know who they're gonna pick, but I like the way things are, you know, it's council has been moving very well, you know, the last couple of years. I would like to see actually the mayoral position be a four-year position. I think that's something we need to look into, so that the mayor can be more active, and the mayor pro tem, more active for years, you know, one year following the other, instead of uh, using one of the years to campaign or, you know, it, it takes from the work that needs to be done. But we need a four-year one and I hope you'll consider it. And, uh, it's great you're gonna close it for Mr. Clayton, he was a wonderful man. So, thank you very much.
All right, uh, we're closing the public comments, uh, we're gonna go straight to council deliberation, um, at this time. Um, uh, if you have a nomination, go ahead and, uh, put your requests. Okay, uh, Councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you, Mayor.
And then, uh, Dr. Thornton.
And right now, we're just gonna take nominations. Yeah, so, um, I'd like to go ahead and nominate, uh, again for another year, Mayor Pro Tem, Victoria Baca. Um, will, will we share comments during deliberation or is now the time to?
It's just a nomination.
Okay, I'd like to nominate, uh, Victoria Baca.
Okay, it doesn't need a second, yeah, for these, 'cause of the nominations, it's just a name. Okay? All right. Were you gonna, you're gonna say the same thing? Everyone's saying the same thing, okay. All right, so there's only one nomination, um, so we'll just vote, and then, um, are you prepared to do that, uh, Pat, or do you wanna voice vote better?
You can vote.
Okay.
Well, somebody should make a motion and second it.
Okay, uh, is, so do you wanna make that motion? And then second, from Councilmember Thornton. A motion from Councilmember Cabrera, and then a second from, um, Councilmember Dr. Thornton. Please vote. All right, and it's, uh, four yes, one no, and then we'll go straight to public hearing items, congratulations. All right, uh, I can get to it. All right, so Madam Clerk, um, do we have the ballot?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, all right, uh, so public hearing for the one national pollutant discharge elimination system. Mail ballot proceeding, report of Public Works, a brief report, thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, as indicated, uh, this is the ballot proceedings for a single-family home on Calmia Avenue, a condition of approval to satisfy the development process, the property owner has chosen to do this option, uh, this is the parcel charge affects only the one property. So staff recommends that the council hold a public hearing, absent compelling testimony, otherwise approve to conduct the ballot process, accept the ballot results, and if yes, set the rate, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you so much, council questions of staff, please press your button. Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna open the hearing. Any public testimony, Madam Clerk?
None.
Okay, hearing closed, any council deliberation? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendation number two, which is to direct the city clerk to open and count the return MPDS ballot.
Almost.
Okay, um, okay, so it was motion by Councilmember Marquez, this first one, okay, any second? Okay, second from Councilmember Cabrera, she's like, I don't wanna do the second. What have you, all right, okay, so motion by, um, Councilmember Marquez and a second by Cabrera, Councilmember Cabrera, please vote. All right. And it's approved, okay, so Madam Clerk, if you could, please count the ballot?
The ballot vote is yes.
Okay, um, I entertain a motion by council to approve staff recommendations numbers three and four, which is to verify and accept the results and then receive and file the official tally. Okay, motion by, uh, Councilmember Marquez? Second by Councilmember Cabrera, please vote. Motion passes. All right, we're gonna move straight to five oh, we're gonna move straight to, uh, reports. There were no items removed, uh, we'll have a report from Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Baca. From the March Joint Powers Commission.
Yes. Uh, tonight I'm providing the update for the March Joint Powers Commission meeting that was held on January eighth. At that meeting, the commission selected, uh, yours truly, Victoria Baca, to be the chair of the commission for twenty twenty. And Rita Rogers from the city of Paris. Thank you, and Rita Rogers from the city of Paris, who will serve as the vice chair. In addition, the co- commission also filled vacancies on the finance subcommittee and the development community ad hoc committee, West of the two fifteen, replacing, um, Councilmember Mike Gardner with Councilmember Chuck Conder from the city of Riverside on both committees, that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you so much, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Baca. Uh, we have the Riverside County Transportation Commission, uh, report, actually, uh, my designee was their, uh, Councilmember Dr. Thornton, but I'll just have a report here, RCTC is requesting, at this meeting, they were requesting the public input on a list of regional transportation investment projects as part of a draft traffic relief plan. The proposed projects are intended to reduce congestion, connect communities, improve safety, and keep infrastructure in good condition. Please visit the RCTC website for additional information, this concludes my report. All right, that moves straight to, uh, city manager's report?
Sure, uh, Honorable Mayor, Member of City's Council, there was a question about Movel learns and a brief update. Uh, it is up and running, uh, this past year, the city council approved appropriations for Movel learns project. And you're able to fund fifty students at the Moreno Valley College to help our residents, uh, get their certificate or advance to a four-year college. And, uh, the college is very, very appreciative of this program, it's a fantastic partnership that we have formed with the college and continue the relationship that we have. Also, I just wanna congratulate the mayor and the city council for winning another award. Uh, yes, we won the, uh, award from the Inland Empire Economic Partnership for the best public partner uh, for this year, and this is as a result of all the collaborations, uh, and the partnership that we have formed really growing the city and advancing, uh, th- this region. This concludes the city manager's, uh, report.
Okay, thank you so much, uh, city manager, we have, um, city attorney's report.
Thank you very briefly, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members, this Friday, um, I will be in Sacramento at the committee meetings, I'm, I'll be sitting for the LAC committee, uh, I believe some of you will also, uh, be up there, so I'll see you there, thank you.
Great, all right. Thank you so much, uh, that brings us to our reports and comments from council members who did not speak earlier. Um, you will have five minutes, uh, for your closing comments, so we'll have Councilmember Dr. Thornton.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, I wanna thank my colleagues so much for approving ASICS, the amendment to the my, the Higher Movel Veteran Program. Um, as you know, we are fully committed as a city to supporting our veterans. Um, and this amendment is going to, um, not only help increase the amount of veterans who self-identify um, in the businesses, but also as a retention tool to local businesses to not only recruit veterans, but um, uh, do what they can to ensure that they stay retained, um, in employment. Um, this is gonna have a larger impact on our community, and I just wanna thank my colleagues so much for their continued support of our veteran population. Um, uh, also, I would just wanna give a, uh, shout out to the economic development staff for all the work they've put in at our Employment Resource Center, and to the research they've put in concerning amending the Higher Movel Veteran Program to ensure that it is the most successful, um, and impactful for our community. And I wanna remind our community members that, um, our Employment Resource Center not only provides training to small business owners um, but individuals who have the intr- entrepreneurial spirit and want to start a small business. Um, I do encourage you to go to, um, the Employment Resource Center, it's located in the same shopping center as, uh, Polly's Pies, it's right next to it. Um, and, um, we have recruiting, uh, that takes place from local organizations looking to hire Moreno Valley veterans and take advantage of our other Higher Movel programs such as Hire a Movel Student um, and Hire a Grad, uh, so, uh, th- those are really great programs. As, um, our city attorney mentioned, um, I will be in Sacramento on Friday at the Housing Community and Economic Development, uh, Committee. Um, I've been appointed as the regional rep from the League of California Cities, and I'll be there with my colleague, uh, Councilmember Cabrera, and we're looking forward to discussing housing issues that impact the Inland Empire, um, the community issues and, um, economic development opportunities. And to have a seat at the table and to be able to speak on behalf of Moreno Valley is a great honor, and I'm looking forward to bringing that information back to our community and at the same time advocating for additional funding and resources in our community, thank you so much, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much, uh, we have comments from Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanna say Happy New Year's to everybody, I haven't been around a while, but, um, I wanna give thanks to all the well wishers, um, for my speedy recovery. Um, I'm at ninety-nine point nine recovery, so, everything's great. I was up in Sacramento last week for several days with the, um, California Contract Cities, and, um, I was able to speak to, um, Senator Ross, didn't get a chance with Medina, but, um, we're gonna talk later. And I spoke to other senators and, uh, representatives up there, and we spoke about the homeless problems, public, um, safety and the, um, vet housing here in, um, at the base over here. You know, a lot of the money goes to, would you believe it or not, the state brings down this way, goes to LA County, city of Los Angeles. It's unbelievable, we get pennies compared to what they get. But nothing's been done in LA. Um, I spoke to Senator Ross about that, and he, um, he's advised me that, um, we do have money out here. And we should look into where that money's at, and hopefully we can get some money for the city. Well, we have a homeless count coming up, and, uh, hopefully everybody can get on the website and help us on that homeless count for that one day. Um, public safety, same thing, spoke about money for pop units, additional pop units within our, our police department. Again, Senator Ross had mentioned to me, there is money out there, we just gotta go look for it. Um, he was kinda surprised that, um, we weren't getting any of that money. And of course, we talked about the, um, vet housing, I spoke to, um, Senator Bob Archileta. He is, uh, head of the Committee for Veterans Affairs in, in Sacramento, I spoke to him on a, on a possible shelter, not here in Moreno Valley, but Riverside County. He's working on something for LA County, if it succeeds over there, he says he'll help me getting one out here in Riverside County, so I'm looking forward to that sometime this year. And other than that, I wanna say, um, thank you for our staff for a great job you have done, starting off the new year on the right foot, and, um, thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Marquez, we have, uh, Councilmember Cabrera.
Good evening, everyone. I will be, um, in Sacramento as well on Friday for the, um, League of California Cities as well, on behalf of the Latino Caucus. And, um, so I'm just really glad that we have more representation from our city and from our region, and we'll be able to advocate, um, a little bit stronger for our area up in Sacramento, so I'm looking forward to that. Um, also, um, just want to thank, uh, Jason, the intern from CBU for making those comments about Movel learns and you know, that's, uh, something that we've really made a priority as a city, as a city government, to increase our educational attainment. Um, and hearing testimonies like yours, um, you know, that, that's why we do what we do, right? Because we wanna help, um, you know, folks from my generation, from your generation to succeed and get the higher wages, get those new jobs that are getting pushed out by the economy and setting ourselves up for success, so I'm really glad to see that, that you're doing well, so, uh, thank you for being here. Um, I just wanna mention also, um, last year, the city council did fund the addition of, um, four community service officers, and, um, they're finally out in the field as of this year. Um, so that, uh, that'll definitely help, um, in terms of our response times and things like that, so I'm really glad to see that we have more police officers out, uh, patrolling Moreno Valley. Also, the point in time count, like was mentioned, that is actually taking place next Wednesday, the twenty ninth, at five thirty in the morning. Um, if you are willing to volunteer, if you have some time, a lot of us here from the city will be out there. Um, so we welcome any more volunteers to come out and be a part of, uh, being out in the field and counting the homeless folks that are out um, in our city. Um, also, uh, tax season is upon us, um, a lot of checks are gonna be, uh, coming in the mail, a lot of very, uh, valuable things in the mail. So just wanna remind, um, everyone out there, um, all the public, that USPS does offer informed delivery. I know it's been mentioned before, but I just wanna remind everyone that you can go to informdelivery.usps.com and sign up for that, you can download the app, and it's very helpful because it, it lets you keep track of all the mail that's coming to your house, so right now with all the mailbox theft that we've been seeing, um, uh, something like informed delivery comes in handy because you know exactly what's coming to your house, and in the worst case scenario that, you know, a mailbox theft does occur in your neighborhood, you're able to know what was taken, and you can follow up with those companies or institutions or organizations to get the correspondence that you were supposed to, so I highly recommend signing up for informed delivery and letting your neighbors know as well. Um, a couple more things. Couple more things, so general plan update, that's currently underway. The open house and community meetings do start this week, so please, you know, stay in touch with our social media pages and our website, because we do want to hear from you and how we're gonna build the future of our city. So just keep that in mind. This Saturday, Cyber Patriot National Semifinals are happening at Moreno Valley College. So just a little bit of background, that's actually a program that deals with cybersecurity, and as we all are very familiar with, that data just continues to be a bigger and bigger part of our society and our economy, and being able to keep all of that data and information safe is vital for our future. And so here, in our city, we have young students, young talented minds, who are, who are on a national stage competing and showing off their skills. So, if you want to come out and check that out on Saturday, it'll be over at Moreno Valley College. And last but not least, the census event. I know I've mentioned this every single meeting for I don't know how long, but it's finally coming up next Saturday, February first, right here at the Conference and Recreation Center. We're gonna have job recruitment for anyone who's looking for employment, and, and really just, you know, to be an educational event, so that we can all find out more about what the census is, why it's important. There'll be free light refreshments and some snacks, so, you know, everyone is welcome. Bring, you know, bring your families, if your families have children, bring them along as well. So, we look forward to seeing you next Saturday here at the Conference and Rec Center. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have Mayor Pro Tem Baca.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Cabrera and Thornton, for your comments. I'd just like our community to get as much information as, as possible, and I know that you're championing the veterans and getting the information out there, and I really appreciate that. And thank you, Councilwoman Cabrera, for nominating me for Mayor Pro Tem for twenty twenty. I just want to say thank you to my colleagues for selecting me, thank you to the community for your, your comments. It's really like, I, I really appreciate it. I can't show all my appreciation, I can't stand up and hug you, but I just want to say thank you, because it's something that I enjoy. I like going out to the community, representing the city at events when our mayor can't be present, and it's very important to me that the mayor gets represented and is always on top of things, and I'm very fortunate to serve a very, the greatest mayor ever in Moreno Valley. I also want to say, I'm very happy that I was also chosen to be the chair of the March Joint Powers Authority, because this is a very important commission that has a lot of duties as far as all the land that's being used and built to support jobs and a lot of businesses here in Moreno Valley. We'll be traveling, I'll be traveling to Washington DC to meet with legislatures, legislators regarding the March Joint Powers and what our needs are, and what they can do for us as far as funding, so that we can continue to grow. And I want to thank Luis Palomares for bringing up the, closing the meeting in the honor of Jeff, Jeffrey Clayton. He was a Moreno Valley resident, and this was such a beautiful man. I mean, he had, just had a golden, a heart of gold, and he would do so much for the youth, a lot. And I never heard of him say anything bad about anyone or ask for anything for himself. So if we can do that, that would really be great. And I also want to reiterate that the census event is coming, and please share it in your, on your Facebook page, any social media, because we need to get as many people to this event, so that they can learn and educate themselves about what it means to the city, because there's a lot of rumors out there, and we need to quash them, and I think that education is the best way to get people to get involved. And then we have the point-in-time count, so that we can know how many people we have out. And, you know, just come. I mean, you have to register, but it, it will, it's very fulfilling. It's at five-thirty in the morning, and you can have time to, you know, finish what you're doing, go home, and get ready for work. But please look on our webpage, the county's webpage, our Facebook pages, and get out there and come and volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem Baca. And I just want to say, you know, congratulations to you for receiving that appointment, and couldn't be more than, more happier than to have you with us as the Mayor Pro Tem. You know, sometimes there are events, you know, where we do need the Mayor Pro Tem to be there and, and to really represent the city. And so I can say that Victoria Baca has done a great job in those events and really stepping up for those leadership roles. And even sometimes, even when I'm not here at the meetings, she's also ran the meetings very smoothly. So I think it was a wise choice from the council. I also want to thank Jason also too, for, for coming up here and sharing your story, and, and I do remember your wife as well, from the program, and, you know, I'm so glad that, that it had such a positive benefit to her, to, you know, to you, and thank you for sharing that story. And it's really important that, that people hear those stories and to see that this program was beneficial, or actually is beneficial and continues to be. So, the program, I do want to say right now, has fifty students, fifty new students, and we want to continue to, to advocate for more, and my whole goal is to get even businesses in the community to contribute even more to it, so that we can have hundreds of students participating in it. So, that program is going to grow, because it's the first-ever universal basic student income. You know, it's the first-ever, you know, program where we're actually helping students go to college, you know, while they're going to college and maintaining good grades. So, thank you again. I also want to share that tonight, we also did a really good thing as well. It was on the consent calendar, but we approved agreement with more Moreno Valley schools tonight to support the MAP program, which is the mayor's apprenticeship program, and this is a program where we help inter, actually, high school students have employment. And so we help them with career readiness skills, leadership skills, and at the same time, we provide them real-time work experience here at the City of Moreno Valley. So I'm so excited about that program, because we can probably help another forty students just by what we approved here tonight. So, that's amazing, and it's gonna be amazing for the youth. I remember I got one of my first opportunities, you know, from an organization, and they helped me, and, you know, and I think that sparked an interest. So I think that sometimes, you know, by us doing these types of programs, it can spark an interest in someone too. You know, maybe it might not help everyone, but for the most part, I think it'll help some. Also, we supported the Family Service Association as well. This is an organization that is going to provide, actually, they actually do this right now, a lot of early childhood education, and they have food programs for the seniors and all those things. So we approved a program to actually help them and to continue their operations as they continue to grow in their business. Also, I want to thank the council for approving the Higher Mobile for veterans. This is really, really important. We actually approved it before, but what this does, actually, this little tweak here to this program, is now we're going to be incentivizing the veterans to report themselves that, hey, you know, I am a veteran. So then that way, they also get an incentive too. And then the employer gets the incentive, and the veteran gets the incentive, and it's a stipend, and hopefully we can have more job opportunities for veterans. I do want to mention that I participated in the telephone town hall. That was last week, and we had exciting numbers of residents that participated in it. We actually had thousands of residents that participated, and about two thousand two hundred residents that were on the call for the, for the entire hour. So that was actually amazing. We did a poll, we actually, we did multiple polls. I want to thank the staff, the entire E-Team was here, just to also kind of hear the experience and see what the community is really saying. And what I really love about these telephone town halls is that you get so much input from so many residents, as opposed to just having one like at a Starbucks or at a small location. You know, you really get thousands of people and, and their input. And then any questions that didn't get answered, we're actually following up with those people. So you're gonna be receiving a phone call, if not from myself or the staff, we're gonna be following up to make sure that your concern is met. So again, just want to thank you all, and we're gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting in memory of a great friend, a great man, a person that was a mentor to many, many, many youth in the football and in the community, and a Moreno Valley resident, Jeffrey Clayton.